Pollen season is here, and Premier Heating and Air has rebates on new units starting at $1,000. Indoor air quality products are free with the purchase of a new unit, and all types of financing are available for new units and for repairs. Premier Heating and Air, a locally owned and operated company. Log on to dublin.premierishere.com or call 478-326-333. And for a limited time only, enjoy a one-time exclusive offer for new customers with our dispatch fee waived on your next repair. So call or log on today. Premier is here.
This March 20th, 2025 meeting of the Dublin City Council is hereby called for order. We'll begin with an invitation from a former council member, Jerry Davis. Please remain standing after the invitation for the pledge to the flag. Mr. Dix?
Good morning, good afternoon. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, all wise and gracious Father, Lord, we just want to thank you for another day that you made. We want to thank you for this meeting of the Dublin City Council, Lord. We ask you to bless.
Each and every one here, let us, uh, council make the wisest decisions that would be pleasing in your eyesight, uh, and we will be sure to give you all the honor, glory, and the praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I want to welcome everyone here to our lunchtime meeting of the Dublin City Council. We will begin with the first item on our agenda, the approval of the March 6, 2025 City Council meeting minutes. Do you have that, those meeting minutes in your packet? Any changes, corrections, additions? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs with a second from Councilman Mascara. All those in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
If anyone is opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The second item is approval of bills over $15,000. Those bills are in your packet. Are there any questions for staff regarding those bills? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion. We pray the bills. Second.
We have a motion from Councilman Griggs and a second from Councilman Jones. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
If any are opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Item number three is approval of purchases over $15,000. At this time, we have only one purchase over $15,000. Mr. Powell, will you please give us some background information on that?
Sir, this is for the Water Construction Division of our Water Utility Department. Uh, this is for the purchase of a brush cutter from Yancey Caterpillar out of Osteo, Georgia for $18,908.34. This was a budgeted item. Uh, this is utilized by the water distribution folks to clear, um, areas that get overgrown where there are super manholes or other water utility assets, um, and will be used for them for that purpose. Um, again, this was budgeted and the, the price is within our budget. We recommend approval.
All right. Any questions for staff regarding this, uh, purchase item? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Jones with a, uh, a second from Councilman Godfrey. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. We'll now move to item number four on the agenda, which is discussion and action on a resolution to terminate a lease agreement, uh, regarding the Shamrock Fire Station. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2511, a resolution of the City of Dublin, Georgia by and through its mayor and council to approve the termination of a lease agreement between Dub- uh, Dublin City Schools and the City of Dublin for property at Shamrock Fire Station to provide authority for the approvals for the termination of said lease agreement, to provide for an effective date, and for other lawful purposes. Um, back, uh, in the, um, nineties, the, um, a lot of transactions occurred regarding, uh, the Dublin High School, where the present Dublin High School campus is located, um, and the board office. Um, and of course Shamrock Fire Station, uh, is their adjacent to all of this property. Um, there was apparently a lease that was done to the city school system that I think what must have been erroneously included, uh, where our fire station is actually situated. Um, I know that the school system, when they have sporting events at their baseball facility there, adjacent to the fire station, um, they have spectators that typically park in the, in the vacant lot that's next to our fire station, and there's been no issues with that. Um, but the school doesn't necessarily need a lease for that. So, um, to clean this up, we're asking that the council approve termination of the lease. Uh, we will provide the 30 days written notice for this, and, and I've been in contact with Dr. Williams with the school, and he's aware of this.
All right. And so just to clarify, this, this is just to clean up a, a legal mistake that was made in the nineties regarding the fire station itself?
That's right.
Okay. Uh, any questions, uh, regarding this? And I know that we were trying to clean up title of the property as the city schools were looking at maybe building, uh, practice facility. That's what caused this?
That's right. Currently, they've indicated they, they do have a facility they were looking to build, uh, for the, um, baseball, um, activities. Uh, they think they can do that on the property that they currently own, and I've told Dr. Williams, if they find out they do have some need for, for property that's next to the fire station, we could talk through that and bring it to the council for approval. Uh, the main thing here is that this lease includes the actual property where the fire station is and the fire station, so I, we would like to get this terminated.
Okay. So just, just for clarity's sake, this just, the reason we realized that this was happening is because we were working with the school system to try to work with them on the, the facility that they're looking at, and this is just cleaning up the old legal mistake from the nineties?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff regarding this? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve from Councilman Jones with a second from Councilman Colby. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the ayes have it. Item number five on the agenda is discussion on a resolution to allow certified police officers to purchase their service weapons. Mr. Powell?
This is Resolution 2512, a resolution of the City of Dublin, Georgia by and through its mayor and council, uh, to authorize the sale and/or transfer of certain personal property of the city to set an effective date and for other lawful purposes. Um, the council may recall purchasing new firearms, uh, for the police department. Uh, will be purchased that. It included a trade-in of our existing, uh, stock of firearms, and, um, the company has expressed to us, and the chief has been able to verify that we can, it is permissible to allow our fire, excuse me, our police officers to purchase their, um, firearms that they're carrying if they would like to keep those. Um, what we would do is take a dollar-for-dollar amount from the fire, uh, from the police officers, um, and then submit that to the company to make up for the credit that we had. Uh, any that are not purchased by police officers would be sent back into the company for the credit. Um, this does require action from the mayor and council to approve the sale of this personal property, and because of the, the minimal value, uh, which is $285 per firearm, um, we, we have to, um, we can sell it directly to these officers.
All right. So my understanding is that this is, that this type of gun transfer is permitted under federal law by the ATF, but that state law requires if we want to do it locally, we have to do this resolution to permit that?
Ours is, your involvement in this, in it is because it's city property.
City property.
And, um, but state law does allow, I mean, federal law does allow for the officers to purchase their firearms.
Okay. All right. Any other questions for staff? If not, do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second.
All right. So we have a motion from Councilman Mascara with a second from Councilman Griggs. Any discussion in the motion? If there's no discussion on the motion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any are opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
At Bank of Dudley, we're your community, your bank, and with seven branches to serve you, there's a Bank of Dudley close by, and there's a familiar face close by. The same familiar faces that you've seen for many years. The same people that you've grown to trust, because that's what community banking is all about. Seven branches, local people, local decisions, local banking. That's the Bank of Dudley, serving our community since 1905.
Hi, I'm, uh, Dr. Dustin Gay. I'm a local orthopedic surgeon with Houston Clinic Orthopedics, and we'd really like to invite everybody to come out to our new, uh, office facility to take a look at it. It's a larger space with physical therapy, and, uh, we're just excited to have it, and we'd love for people to come out and visit us.
Come by and see us today at our brand-new location, the Houston Clinic Medical Drive in Dublin.
That concludes our regular agenda items, and now it's time for citizens' comments. Uh, as always, we have, uh, three minutes per citizen available for making comments related to city business. If anybody would like to come forward to make citizens' comments, now is your opportunity. Ms. Wright?
I'm doing a little bit of stuff. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Hello. Hello, everybody. My name is Jelsoft and you stood on right. I live at 603 Hudson Drive. First and foremost, hello, everybody. Um, special, a special hello to Mr. Leprechaun over there, the city manager. Okay. Woo-hoo. Okay. I don't know what they said to you at whichever meeting I saw you at, but congratulations. Okay, number one. I'll start backwards first. I live, on Sunday, I was ambulanced to Riverview, and by the time we got back, not Riverview, Fairview, by the time we got back from the hospital at 8:30, there was mass shootings in the Saxon Heights area. My husband was sitting on the porch. We heard the, the machine gun fire, whatever. I was laying in the bed, I saw blue, like, blue lights just flying up on the Anson Street. The question that our neighbors have, which I live around a lot of older people, is what are these black poles that are all around the city? Are they cameras? Are they solar panels? What are they? Because I'm doing a survey for a lot of people where these things are all popping up. Citizens want to know, why can't these be used to find out, um, the license plates? Okay, so that's that. Okay, going back to number one. Okay, Saxon Heights had decided to call down the forbid, the forgotten part of the city. It took from Hurricane Helene up until, what was it, Monday, before the tree lounge leaves that were piled up just across the street from me and stumps that we had to have people cut down ourselves were removed. But first I was told that it was going to be reckless. I rode around, because I had to pick up medicine, I had to VA. I did not see the truck. By 2 o'clock, I had not seen the truck. I called the city manager's office. Somehow somebody called. My husband was sitting on the porch. He had gotten home. The workers said, who called their supervisor? They had come down Hudson, but Freyett Lane, um, down by, um, South Jefferson, around where my, my councilman, Eugene Smith's father, there's just puddles of water, lones trees still there. Number two, a posi- positive suggestion downtown Plankton with a shuttle or twally. That's what I have today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Um, and just as a point of information, the black poles are the Flock camera poles? Is that correct?
There, there's two, two different things, uh, that's currently out and inactive, yeah.
Let him come tell it.
Chief Moon.
Chief Moon?
Chief Moon.
So, um, Chief Moon can, yeah. If you don't mind, we've had a citizen question regarding, uh, what the black poles are around town, uh, whether they're holding camera systems, gunshot detection systems. Can you just provide some information, uh, so the public will know what the black poles are?
And if you're using those in response to any criminal activity?
Yes. Uh, so the black poles are DOT breakaway pole that, uh, Flock uses. They have the license plate recognition system on them. They have the Raven gunshot detection system on them, and soon they'll have, uh, hopefully we'll have Live View cameras on them, so. And all of those are in response to, uh, criminal activity that we use in investigation, so.
All right. And then the question was raised about the, uh, gunshots and the homicide, uh, the Coleman Street apartments, and whether or not this technology is, was helpful or being used in that investigation?
It's being used as we speak in that investigation, so, yes.
All right. Thank you very much. All right. Um, any other council members want to respond, anything there? Okay. If not, we'll now have our next citizen comment. Mr. Hall?
Start the clock.
My name is John Hall. I live at 307 West Gaines Street, right across the street. Uh, just a couple of things. First thing is, we had a homeless person behind the dumpster camping out, and I found out that we're supposed to have a homeless shelter here in Dublin. I have no idea where it is. Uh, that's the first thing. Uh, the second thing is today's meeting, uh, the agenda didn't show up on the site until, ooh, that yesterday at about 5 o'clock. Uh, it'd be kind of helpful if the agenda would show up a few days earlier, because I like, because I'm across the street, that's why y'all see me so much, and it'd be nice to see a couple of days beforehand when's the meeting, you know? They weren't, uh, this is not an evening meeting, this is a 12 o'clock, so that's another thing. The other thing is, I noticed on, uh, and I've watched some of the city council meetings online, and the comments are turned off. I don't understand that. I thought that would be a good idea for citizens, you know, you have a meeting here, and then people can make their comments, and, you know, I'm not saying, you know, argue or something like that, but just make comments, and I wondered why y'all turn the comments off right after the meeting? I mean, seemed to me you just leave it open and let people comment. Uh, the last thing, last thing is the clock is off. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those comments, and I, I know that you raised a question about the, uh, whether or not Dublin has a homeless shelter.
City of Hope is.
Dublin Rising.
And then Dublin Rising.
So there, there are two, is that correct?
Yeah.
Can you just, for public information, again, state the names of those two homeless shelters?
It's City of Hope, I know, um, is one. It's not in Dublin proper, but they, they do serve our community. And then Dublin Rising also has, um, opportunities there for homeless serving.
Yeah, Highway 19.
That one's on Highway 19. All right. Uh, thank you for that, and, um, and I, we will check on the posting of the agenda. I, I don't know if it was just something that was all from, from this meeting, but, um, typically the agenda gets posted, uh, prior to the meetings with some advance notice as soon as the agenda is finalized by staff. All right. Uh, next citizens' comments, yes?
Mitch Whittington, 108 Conne Street. Retired from Los Angeles Department of Water and Power, worked on the power side, but I know a lot of the guys and understand what they do on the water side. I still have trash in front of my place, debris. Uh, there'll be more debris, and it won't be a contractor doing the tree takedown and removal, it'll be me. I'll get rid of the heavy wood, but the limbs I'll bring out to the street. I have intentions of repouring everything out there where all the water meters and the gas meters that, that leave from that area, but I need to find out, who do I need to talk to so that they still have some kind of access to the gas line that runs that right away? I'm more than glad to pay for it myself out of my own pocket from actually repairing the curb, there's the sidewalk, all the way up to the curb. Years ago, I don't know what happened, water, power, so, somebody water, whatever, but the driveway got busted up. I'm willing to pay to fix that. I just, I guess I'm asking for a VIP treatment to figure out who, who do I need to talk to to get all this done? I'm, uh, ready to start getting my fence up and getting my landscape done. Uh, I'm actually tired of looking at my own mess. Another thing is, uh, I would like to see more fruit trees planted, or trees that have nuts that more than rodents eat, right? Because most of what I'm seeing is either beautiful flowers or whatever, but I can remember as a kid, I went down a sidewalk, or I went down a dirt road, I went down a, uh, any field, a fence row. We always had plums, blackberries, things of that nature. We don't have that anymore. I'd like to see all that come back. And, and with the City of Dublin, we already doing a lot of great things. I'm not, I, I know I've, uh, kind of been a little brash with here since I got here, but, uh, it kind of keeps people, uh, not on their toes, but just paying more attention. Uh, I would like to get with whoever it takes, because a lot of the power poles that Georgia Power has up are way past their lifespan. I'm not asking to change and make laws like they have in California, but they have a law there that the life expectancy of a power pole is 25 years, and they lease certain sections of that pole. I, I imagine y'all have to deal with that yourself, as far as leasing a part of the pole. Um, some of these poles have got steel truss by them, need to be fixed, and I'm out.
All right. Uh, thank you, Mr. Whittington. Any other citizens' comments, uh, this afternoon?
Hi, I'm Tom Dominey. Here at Dublin with Nelson, we pride ourselves on providing the industry's highest-quality products at the most competitive pricing. We are a full-service wholesaler specializing in plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products. With a staff that collectively offers more than 50 years of expertise, our team knows your industry, and we can answer your questions and help you get the parts and equipment you need. From mowing to raining, we carry the plumbing, irrigation, and industrial products you need from the brands you trust. We also carry a great lineup of Milwaukee tools. At Dublin with Nelson, our goal is the long-term success of your business. We achieve that goal with a simple commitment, doing things right, one customer at a time. If you have a question, or if you're looking for a hard-to-find part, give us a call. Our experts are ready to help. Order online, give us a call, or come by at 507 Airport Road in Dublin. We're committed to building long-term relationships with our customers by earning your business
Spring is right around the corner. You got that huge honeydew list? Come to Roach Farm and Garden. Weeds and stickers in your grass? Beat them back with pre and post-emerge. Come on in Roach Farm and Garden and speak to one of our experts. The time is now to set out trees. Roach Farm and Garden has a huge selection of fruit and ornamentals. Storm damage or just need to hem up something? Roach Farm and Garden has all your fencing needs, T-pose, poles, wire, and the tools to make it happen. Did you say cross ties? Roach Farm and Garden has you covered. It ain't warmed up yet? Come on in to Roach Farm and Garden and check out our insulated bibs, carhartt jackets, and hoodies. Do you like french fries or mashed potatoes? Well, get to Roach Farm and Garden and pick up a sack of seed potatoes while they last. Three varieties. You've got a sweet tooth? Roach Farm and Garden has jams, jelly, syrup, and honey. Even got chocolate-covered pecans. Want to make your own pie? Pick up some fresh pecan halves while they last. Fun season never ends? Pick up your feeders, deer feed, and remember, now is the time to put out your salt blocks. And as always, Roach Farm and Garden has feed for just about everything, including some vet supplies. Remember, baby chicks and ducks arrive in March. Need a place to sit, whether it's in your hunting blind or on the front porch from a rocker to a glider? The lint Roach Farm and Garden help you with that to-do list. Got two locations, Dublin and Wrightsville.
All right. If we don't have any more citizens' comments, so, uh, have council comments, we'll start with City Attorney Mr. Groover. Any comments this afternoon?
I'd be with y'all.
All right. Thank you. Uh, our city clerk, Heather Browning, any comments?
No comments, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Mr. Brown, we'll start with you.
Thank you, everybody, for being here. Y'all have a good rest of your week. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Jones?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, everyone, for coming out for your citizens' comments they're taking. And, and I know, I understand about, uh, the debris beside the road. I've had it on my street, been there for a minute, and I think they finally came and picked it up. They even picked all of it up, and I know why, but I, I understand that also, so we are working on that, and I like to say that we do, uh, and I understand, uh, the recent incidents that we've had in Dublin is very sad, and we're not that type of community to have, that we've been quiet the last couple of years, but seeing like here recently, we'd have had, and my condolences goes out to the families that are affected by that on both sides, and, um, pray, and I'm praying for comfort for the families, but we do, and I know our, our officers are doing the best they can, and we provide the technology, we are working through some things, so just please bear with us. And, uh, it's not our fault, not the police officer's fault, they're doing the best they can do. Um, they were stretched out Sunday from one end to the other end, and all of this, so three, four different calls, two, 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 three different calls at the same time. Please just bear patient with them, be patient with them, they are doing the best they can. But I will say this, though, public and citizens, you got a job, you got a job in this too. Somebody knows something, somebody sees something, somebody know what went on, and I know they do, because I've seen the post on Facebook, and I've seen what's going on. You need to talk to the police officer, let them know what's going on. Don't say it's their job to catch them. No, it's our job to catch them. Sorry. Please, let them know. You got a shooter out there on the loose in Coleman that did that, that killed somebody, please. If you know something, call it privately, they got a private number you can call, text, I do believe. You will be unidentified, you may even get an award, I'm not for sure. Please, don't sit there and put all them police officers, sit there, and then blame, blame councilmen, I've seen, oh, y'all let the fish, they didn't do this, no, we're going to do so much. You got to do your job. If you know something, say it. If you scared, do it privately. Pick up a phone, go, go somewhere. You got a job to do also. The police can't do it by themselves, they're doing the best they, I, I can promise you. I've talked with them, I've been with them, and I know they're doing the best they can do. And we just, as city council, we have provided them with the technology and the stuff that they need to keep, to keep the city as safe as they can, do the best that we can in doing that. We'll, we'll put money. They always told me, you want to know where your priority's at, look at your budget. Our budget is in public safety. We spend quite a few money in public safety, making sure that we get the officers and they get their technology. But you, citizens, please, I'm begging, don't put this on, all on police officers and on city council. We're not there when they're doing the shooting, we're not present, trust me. And I'm telling you, everyone, please be careful, um, everywhere. You have people walking around, and I've, and I've been a victim of this, people walking around scoping at your house. I've had it at my house twice. And I, and so, please, be careful, be diligent, because they come to your house, you need to call the police, let them know, but for this unsolved crime, other unsolved crime, somebody saw something, somebody know something, somebody need to talk. Don't sit there tonight, well, they need to catch you, no, you need to talk. Somebody need to pick up their phone, privately let them know who they need, who they're looking for, and where that person is at, so they can go get them, so we can get a criminal and a murderer off our streets. It's haven't got hot yet, that's my concern. It just getting warm, and we already got this. We've been quiet the last couple of years, I like to keep it that way. So, I'm, I'm pleading to the public, pleading to the people, the state, and I understand Coleman Court, somebody in Coleman Court saw something or heard something, saw something or know something. Please let them know. Please. So we can get this solved and get this out the way and put a criminal away. I'm begging. Don't put this on city, don't put this on the police officer, don't put this on city council. Please, open up and say something. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for those comments, uh, Councilman Jones. And just for public information, the, uh, text number for crime text, it's a private number, is 478-595-7279. That's an anonymous text that you can send that will go to the police department if you have any tips. Again, that is 478-595-7279.
It is private, they won't know, won't know what they're trying?
That's right. That's a, that's a private, uh, tip line for the police department. All right. Uh, Councilman Godfrey, any comments?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. Thank everybody for coming out, and I, um, can actually agree with Benny today on all of that that he said today.
Just today?
We don't always agree, but I definitely agree with you, and I commend you for saying all of that. I live right over by Coleman Court, and, yeah, it's a big deal. And I'm praying for the families that lost their kids. That's not good. So, yeah, keep praying. Pray for our city, pray for these parents, the children, because they are our future, so we need to pray for them. And then, on a lighter note, we have our Keep Dublin Lawrence Beautiful and the O'Conne Alumni Association, the Great American Cleanup coming up. I hope everybody would form a team, because we need to clean up our city. It's not just for the city to clean up the city, it's on us to clean up the city, too. So even though I give Josh a hard time about the workers, it's on us, everybody. It's coming up, and it's March the 29th through April the 5th, and on April the 5th, the last day, we're going to meet all over at Stubbs Park and have a picnic. So also coming up, we have a blood drive at the Dublin Police Department on Tuesday, April the 1st, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and you could get a shirt if you give blood. Mr. Dunne, I know you like shirts, so come give blood and get you a free shirt. And we also have our Arbor Day, and we're planting our 1,000th tree today for the mayor. So that will be right after this, and we're going to go over to the new fire station that's being built on the north side. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Godfrey. Councilman Colby?
Tess was scared because I'm making lots of notes. She thinks I've got lots to say. But I just want to just thank each of you for coming and sharing your comments with us. Neighborhood safety really does start with each and every one of us. Our hearts are breaking over the loss of life that happened over the weekend, and we are looking for any way possible to continue to support our police department and continue to support our neighborhoods. Mayor Kite shared the crime text number, but always know if it, if it is something happening at that moment, please call 911. We had a successful St. Patrick's weekend. Have a lot, have a lot of people ask me, when I say I'm from Dublin, why in the world do you celebrate St. Patrick's Day to the extent that you do? One of our founding members of the city of Dublin was allowed to name our great city, and he named our great city after his wife's hometown of Dublin, Ireland. And so because of that, each one of us, even though we do, do or do not have Irish heritage, we are Irish for this month. Remember that St. Patrick's was a missionary, and he was a missionary not to his own country, but to another country. So even if you're not from Ireland or have Irish history, you can celebrate that he went and ministered to other locations. Remember, this weekend is the balloon glow and launch. Have a great time there. And Arbor Day, again, our 1,000th tree, please come join us for that celebration and see the progress at Northside Fire Station. We do not always have to have Facebook comments, Mr. Hall. We have representatives right here that you can contact. You have our phone number, you have our email, and our staff is more than willing to, to help you. I don't know why or when comment, Facebook comments were turned off, but I do want to encourage each of you to reach out to your representatives individually. We cannot change things that we don't know about, and so please reach out to us individually. You have our email, you have a way to contact us by phone as well. We want to hear from you, and we want to hear how we can improve things in the city. So thank you.
All right. Thank you for those comments. Councilman Mascaro, any comments today?
I don't have any. Thank y'all for coming out.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to thank everybody else for coming, and I think everything's been said.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Griggs. Mr. Powell?
Sure. On, on the debris pickup, I do want to just remind everybody, we did have two trucks that were down for a while. We did get a new clam truck in last week, I think it was, or week before. And so I'm hopeful that the route pickup for that can become like it used to be, and more frequent and more regular. So I do appreciate the public's patience with that, and we're well aware of it, and then we're getting phone calls, so I appreciate that. Regarding the recent shooting, I also agree with what Councilman Jones and everybody else has said about that, and I would just encourage, you know, we're seeing that a lot of the people involved in this are youth, and so I would just encourage parents to know where your children are, know what your children are doing, and there's a lot of responsibility in that. It's unfortunate, I hear from the police department, sometimes that when they go to talk to parents about what the kids are doing, the parents are scared of the children, and that's, we've got to get our society where it's not that way. I'm not scared of my children, you know? So we need to figure that out. But as far as comments on Facebook, we did, we have taken that off. We, the main reason for that is because we don't monitor it, and we don't go back and respond to that. We have very many different ways you can communicate with city staff. If you have any concerns from the public, you can come here to the council meeting and speak. All of our email addresses are on our website. You can call the office, you can come and visit and make an appointment in the office if you want to undiscuss any matters you have with the city. So I would encourage you to use all the other avenues you have to communicate with us. But the main reason is, we don't monitor that, and we don't respond to the comments, and, and we want to create a healthy environment for discussion that's productive, and a lot of times, social media does not prove to be productive in that manner, so. Again, the Arbor Day event is at 1:30 this afternoon at the Northside Fire Station. At the agenda posting, must, I hope it was just a one-time, I will inquire into that and figure out what, what happened there, so I apologize for the delay in posting the agenda. And then as far as the work you're talking about doing, Mr. Whittington, if you'll just maybe meet with me after the meeting, I can kind of give you some direction on where you need to go with that. And we'll address the clock, too. I didn't know about the clock. You're talking about the clock in front of the, the theater in the Fred Roberts?
The time change is off by now.
Oh, I got you, okay.
It is spring full.
All right. Thank you for that. I want to just say thank you to the St. Patrick's Festival Committee, a tremendous amount of hard work. They're all volunteers. They were doing it in addition to their regular jobs without pay, and I think they did a fantastic job. And all the St. Patrick, I feel like I've been wearing green every, it's been great, though, and all these events have been run very smoothly, and it's a great part of maintaining our traditions and our heritage. And as a parent, to be able to take my children to the events that I went to when I was a child, it's a really special way of just being connected to the town, being connected to your history, and being able to pass that on to the next generation. So I wanted to say thank you to the festival committee for the work that you do every year, and also to all the city staff, you know, behind the scenes, city staff, that whether it's the street department, the police department, all the different departments within the city are working behind this, behind the scenes, extra hours, overtime, to make sure these events are safe, and that the traffic flows, and that everybody knows where they're going, and what they're doing, and it's got proper electricity, and, and all the things that it takes. And that's, so I just think it's important to say thank you for the extra work that all the city employees have done, and all the volunteers have done. And also, thank you to the town.